To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for tuning in. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second.
We have a motion with second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public comment. You don't want to talk this time? Okay. Consent items. We have a motion to approve the consent items.
So.
Motion by Gary.
Second.
By Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion items. Superintendent evaluation. Crin.
Well, the committee just met, so I'll let the committee take over.
Yeah, we met and, you know, as you know, we've been working on this for some time. And we got the survey back. I think everybody got a copy of it, correct, Crin?
I, it...
You should.
It's not in... No, it's not because I'm having technical difficulty with the copy I have. It's a PDF. And there were some people that requested that I not share their comments. And I'm trying to find a way to black out that section of the PDF. So as soon as I can figure out the technology of blacking that out, I will black it out and get it there. Because I want to, if they filled it out and with the stipulation that they were making comments that they only wanted me to see, I want to make sure I'm adhering to that request.
But you probably didn't see the whole thing, but you saw parts of it, correct?
No.
It was a...
In the superintendent update, I said the ones that had gone down, the other ones then went up.
I don't remember what other question. I didn't have a copy of the survey, but that's fine. I mean...
So there, I've got a copy. I think we put it off before we realized, but...
Yeah, okay.
So we were, anyway, we went over that. We talked about it a little bit. And then in the past, we had the goals that we established. And then we had some changes, some feedback from everybody on that a while ago. So when we talk today, now that we got the Survey Monkey information back, say that sometimes. The plan is to get out the goal evaluation that we put together. And I think everybody had a copy of it. Of what we talked about. And then we had some feedback on, so then we changed it as a committee. We updated the goals. So the plan is to send this out. Crin talked about sending it out to the leadership team to have them give her some feedback on our goals that we've established. So we have their feedback and her feedback. And all that will be back to us by the 2nd of March. And then we'll take all that information and send it out to each school board member with the review process like we did before. And then on the 15th, we will come back and go over it at that meeting. At our school board meeting at that time.
16.
16.
Sorry.
I wrote down 15.
It's the 15. March 2nd is a Wednesday.
Oh, no, I was right the first time. I'm in the wrong month.
So the 15.
15.
So I was correct. Happens all the time.
And then once again, as a board, you can decide whether you want to go into closed session or not. Do you?
So.
So basically, it's the same process we did last time, except we're using different goals than we used last time. We're using the goals that we set in December.
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 And then we had the feedback and then we updated them, so... If anybody has any questions on it, please give me a call. I do have a copy of what that class that we went to, I think it was what, Mike Lean?
Will.
And Ron, if it's one of the others. Okay. So anybody have any questions on that? Crin, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. Long-term facility maintenance updates.
We did get mockups from Mike Frye for the front of the high school building. They're in the process of installing new faucets in the bathrooms in all the elementary and the high school buildings. So they will be the energy-efficient faucets. But then we also have the abatement issue. And so Pat Weir is here from IEA, the letters for which I keep forgetting.
Institute for Biomedical Assessment.
Thank you. Because on the agenda today, we've got the end-of-year adjustment for the elementary school as old business. But I knew that before we could do that, you as a board really need to understand what needs to be abated, what the process is, what sections of the building, how we could possibly have students in there at the abatement, what safety procedures are in place. And since I've never abated a building before, but Mr. Weir has, I thought it would be wise that he could be here to answer any of those questions that you would have for him. So... Pat, if you would like to introduce yourself.
Sure. I'm with IEA, like you said. I've been with IEA since 1999. And we manage health and safety for schools and hospitals. We have, in my offices, we have about 80 schools that we work with here in southern Minnesota. And we help them, not just with their health and safety programs, but with managing hazardous materials, abating them, managing in place, whatever it may be. So this project isn't anything that we're not familiar with. The length of the project and trying to coordinate that with your general construction is the challenge here. And we kind of got in on this at the end of it here. But we have about seven weeks' worth of abatement at the elementary school to do the work that we've got planned. Some of that could be done in the summer. What UNESCO would like us to do, and we're comfortable doing, is getting the basement level finished before school gets out so that the contractors have somewhere to go right away. There's a lot of work, I think, that they can do in the basement. And then we would start moving up from there and try to stay ahead of them the best we can. But including the boiler room, we have about three weeks of work in the basement. And two weeks on each of the floors after that. The boiler room, the boiler that they think has asbestos on the inside of it isn't being used anymore. So that really could happen anytime, you know, April, May, any of that type of deal. But the main hallway there, in the art room, in the media center, where there's going to be a lot of ductwork and things going in, it'd be nice to be able to bait that in the spring, you know, the end of May, first week of June. The drawing I gave Crin today is, basically, it just shows, I just wanted to give you an idea of how we isolate something like that. The area in the red is where we would do the work. And you can see where I put a blue line in the doorway to the lunchroom. We'd have the contractor build a plywood wall there with a lockable door. And we do the same thing over on the stairwell over there. So it's not something that anybody would have access to during the day. My plan is that we would abate in the evening hours so that the abatement wouldn't actually be going on during school. And then we'd even go as far as I haven't any, there's not going to be a lot of waste that comes off. That ceiling's not real thick with material. But what would come out, they'd take it out, bag it out through the boiler room entrance. So we wouldn't even have them bringing any material through the school. Some of the safety precautions that are in place. The Minnesota Department of Health and the EPA require that air monitoring happens twice daily or twice per work shift. So their first shift before lunch, you take two air samples on the outside of the containment, two different areas, so probably be around the lunchroom area and maybe by that stairwell. And we have a microscopy that reads it right on site so we know that night if they fail or not. And then we do it again after lunch. We do the same thing again. So we would have, we would be able to confirm that, you know, nothing's getting outside of the containment every night before we leave the site. And really, there shouldn't be with this type of project any possible way that we're going to fail samples. Usually if you fail outside samples, it's because somebody's making dust outside of there sweeping or something like that. We do have a lot of experience with abating. This time of year in May, we have 10 schools that we have work coming up in boiler rooms and different things that we have to do it usually at night during the school year to make enough time for these HVAC projects to have them during the summer. They have a lot to squeeze in, so pretty familiar with that. We also abate, we manage abating. We don't actually abate the material. We manage all the abatement at the Mayo Clinic. And that happens year-round during the day and at night. So we're pretty comfortable with abatement projects and making sure that they go the way they're supposed to go when there's people around.
Now, you said on the boiler room, you said the boiler may or may not have asbestos. You don't know for sure?
Yeah, we have to be able to get inside the older boiler, which we've got to wait, they've got to take the burner off so that we can try to squeeze a person in there to sample the boiler brick. Not a great place to do it, but we do it.
So there may not be even any...
There may not be any in there.
So that would be something that you could take out right away and...
Yes.
Kind of go from there.
If there's, other than that, the boiler room appears to be already abated. Everything else, exterior of everything. We did some more sampling today, but I don't expect it to come back as asbestos. But, so if that boiler doesn't have any asbestos on the inside of it, there won't be any work in the boiler room either. Save a week there. The good thing about the boiler room is you could even abate in there without ever coming into anywhere else in the regular part of the building. You have an outside entrance there. The containment would be just built around the boiler. And their shower, decon, and everything would be in the boiler room. So in the boiler room phase of it, nobody would even know that they're down other than custodian. But the precautions we put in place for the other part of building, those walls, just to make sure, no matter how much signage you have up and other things, people tend to wander where they're not supposed to be. So we just like to make sure it's secure during the day when we're not around.
So on these red walls you have on here, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be where the activity would be going on? And then you would have to go outside of the containment area to exit the building? So you were saying like the facilities for cleaning, the showers and stuff for whoever's working would be inside that area?
Inside the red.
So then there would be a barrier between there and then the doorway?
Yeah, the red area there, the hallway where you come in from the lunchroom area, some of that ceiling didn't have any spray on it. It's really almost until you get up to the boiler room where you start to see it in the hallway. So I, what I would probably design into the project is that their shower and everything would be in that hallway.
Oh, in that one space.
Yeah. And then what they call a bag out, which is almost, it's like what people do to get decontaminated. Your waste goes through a similar thing where it gets bagged multiple times. And that would go down into the boiler room and brought out the boiler room door.
So is this, you mentioned that it's two to three weeks in the basement?
The red area is a couple of weeks. The boiler room would be another week.
So is this, so Crin, are we just proposing, I mean, is it an option just for them to be down there and the kids to be upstairs? And so we don't have to discuss kids getting out of school early? Cause, or we could do that as well, correct? Would that put you behind the...
No, that wouldn't affect us in the basement at all. I, you know, we don't, we only need to be in the basement during those times. And we don't need to be in the lunchroom. You know, it's just basically from that media center over to the lunchroom is...
And if the boiler doesn't have anything in it, that would knock off a week?
Yeah.
So you're looking at two weeks to be in that area?
Yeah, correct.
Cause I was, for the last meeting, I thought we needed to get out of the whole school, the whole school, because you needed the whole school, not just the basement.
Right, and that's what I had been told. And so he's been over there doing more sampling again. So that's, you're getting this right out of the chute.
So it's not quite as bad as what we thought it was last week?
The material hasn't changed, just the areas. I mean, the fact that we don't have to get into the lunchroom really for the most part. And a part of it, before, my prior conversation with Crin was, before I got the chance to sit down with the fellows from UNESCO and kind of talked timelines, like, how do we get ahead of you guys? And that's when I said, you know, if I could get in the basement a couple of weeks before school got out, I think I can get ahead of you guys and keep you guys near the work.
And until today, I didn't know there was an option to do the night work so that children are not in the building at all when the abatement is going on.
Yeah, the, it's, you know, it's fun to do it during the day. I just feel like it's better for everybody if they don't see workers there. And it's noisy, you know, they're going to have, you know, spraying with the pressure washer and things like that and just construction type of work going on. So I'd rather come in at 3:30 and have them work till 12:30 or 1 o'clock and then get it all buttoned up and then ready for school in the morning.
Well, I think nighttime would feel, there'd probably be people that would feel a little more comfortable off the whole...
Yeah, it's more of a comfort.
Because you don't have any activities going on.
I, you know, I feel, you obviously have a lot of experience with it. I don't have a problem with the safety part of it. I think you've got that handled. If, in fact, the boiler does not have asbestos, is that a cost savings to us on the bid?
Yeah, so we'll know that before we bid it out. Right now, I'm in the sampling phase of things. And so I've got the most updated blueprints from UNESCO. So I'm looking at things such as where they're going to drill through floors and then we tested the flooring and more of the smaller detailed things versus just the ceiling, what I was looking at the first time I came over here. But we'll get in that boiler if, you know, if we don't, we'll have results before we bid it out. But if we didn't, we would have put it in there as an alternate. So if it didn't contain it, it would be added if it did and deducted if it didn't.
So basically, the information we got is basically worst-case scenario?
Yeah, you mean the budget numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
The budget numbers, I called two contractors and got budget numbers.
Yeah, and basically that's what that is.
That was including the boiler.
Right, everything. Okay.
There'll be some smaller things that came up that weren't in the original budget because, you know, we're just sampling now. But there'll be some things that get taken off too. So we should be fine on the budgets.
Now, when you do the abatement, how long is asbestos in the air? Is it for days or is it just for minutes?
So what happens when they get done with the abatement? We send the tech in. We have a tech here on site, the monitoring air the whole time. And then they go in and they do a visual inspection. So they'll go in and they'll, they get picky. They're looking for small dots of white versus big dots. And when it passes the clearance, then they take down some of their walls and floors on the inside and they spray it with a lockdown, which is almost like a real fine mist of, like a glue, Elmer's glue type of material. And that's supposed to lock down everything that's in the air and lock it down to the plastic. And then we come in the next day with a leak blower and fans and we stir all the air up trying to get that worst-case scenario. Then we run our samples. The samples that we run at the end of it are more strict than the ones we run along the way where they're actually just looking for asbestos. They get sent to a lab in the Twin Cities and then we find out within 24 hours.
So if you were working till, let's say, midnight or 1:00 in the morning, when the kids come in at 8:00 in the morning, is there still asbestos in the containment? I mean, is it floating in the air or is it all kind of... Let's say a kid somehow made it into the containment area.
Yeah.
Which would be the worst-case scenario.
That would be good, yeah, that would be good. It only gets locked down at the very end for material spray. Otherwise asbestos can stain it. We do require that they have everything cleaned up off the flooring and bags at the end of every shift. But what happens inside of a containment, it's a negative pressure containment. So you have these big HEPA air filtration systems that are sucking air out of the containment and they exhaust outside. And so basically, all the air comes into the containment and nothing comes out. And they're required to exchange the air in there every four times per hour. So everything in the air is kind of cleaned out at that point, but it's not safe for people to go into. And that's why the plywood and the lockable doors. So the doors would actually be, have a padlock on if you're going in there.
Oh, okay. That's nice.
And the only person who'd probably have a key to that would be someone like Andy, the custodian.
Yeah, if he goes in there, that's...
Well, if he had to get in partway to the boiler room or something, you know...
Yeah.
So it's not just plastic?
They won't even...
And kids couldn't go up to, I mean, there's like physical wood doors. There's absolutely no way they can get in.
And then you have different stages, just like at KMU system, decon facility, where you have the shower, the clean, you know, change of clothes, doom, doom, doom.
There's five different stages to get in there.
Even before they get to where you're working.
But they won't even see that. They won't see the shower. You'll just see the plywood wall.
Okay, good. You know, cause kids are curious and...
Kids and adults. We've had all sorts of people want to wander in. Never kid them.
So do I understand, you said you are managing this, but you're not, you're not the, you're not doing the abatement, you're just overseeing?
Right, so what we do is we put the project out for bid.
Okay.
We do similar to an architectural service, except for the fact that we're designing for asbestos abatement.
And, but you do the air sampling?
We do the air sampling. So I manage a job on a week-to-week basis. So I make site visits to make sure everybody's on track and that we're having progress meetings and meeting with the general contractor. And I also have one of my staff here that's here all day long. As long as abatement's going on, they have to be here.
Day and night or just when you...
Just during abatement. So if it's 3:30 to midnight, then that's, we have to be here too.
And then when, I thought you said the air test two times a day?
Yeah.
Like what times a day?
While they're abating.
While they're abating?
Abating.
But not during the...
Not during the day.
Night or anything?
Yeah.
What happens if an air monitoring sample fails?
If an air monitoring sample fails, then you have to clean the area and then run, for one sample that failed, you'd have to run five more to clear it.
And who learns about the sample results?
They're all posted. So they're, they belong to the school. So we would, you know, if we failed a sample, we would let somebody know. But most likely, like I said, if it's, there's different things we can do. We can send them in to make sure that, because our samples are just, the ones you do during the day are just looking for any dust at all. So like I said, sometimes a ceiling tile falls outside or some, or custodians not thinking, they're shaking their broom off, and it'll fail instantly. You know, if you can see any dust, they fail. They're pretty strict. And so that type of cases, you still have to clean it up and treat it the same way or you can send the samples in and have them looked at to see what they are. But in a case where you have school going on the next day, we would just have them clean the area and re-sample.
You have any more questions? Ron?
Where are these samples taken?
Where are they taken?
Outside the abatement area?
Well, they require you to take them within 10 feet. And one of them has to be within 10 feet of the decon. So wherever, wherever there's people going in and out, we have to sample right there. The other one, you have a little bit more flexibility so you can pick places. You know, that stairwell would be a good place. Any place that you think that you could possibly have a breach in their containment, that's where they want you to sample it at. The containment, it's not, the hallways are going to be pretty easy to build, but the classrooms are going to be a little tougher. You see where we're going into some of the classrooms about six to eight feet in and where they're going to build these faucets at. And so in them situations, you're building a freestanding wall. You know, it's being held up by duct tape. So a lot of times in there, we're having them use wood studs to keep those walls up. But that's typically where you would see a breach at. The fact that we make and put up the wood usually takes care of that too.
And so you said you've worked with about 10 schools that have had some night abatement done?
We have 10 coming up in this May alone that have, are doing night and May work, all schools going on. We, it's been, in the last 10 years, we've had a lot of May work. A lot of these ventilation projects, they just don't have the time built in doing it for asbestos. So a lot of times we're doing the boilers as soon as they shut them off in the spring. We're in the boiler rooms. So that's, you know, a lot of the time why we have to do it in May. But we've done tunnels and things like that that are underneath the schools while school's been going out. I mean, it's not that uncommon. We like to do it in the summer, but a lot of time we're just not, there's just not time allowed for asbestos abatement. The architects are bidding and engineers are bidding. It's so tight to get all their work done. They need the whole three months. So we get, we gotta be a little bit more creative on how we can get our materials out. At least get a head start.
I understand the time. I mean, I understand.
So when are you going to sample this boiler?
I'm going to be back again next week. I spent the day over there today, sampled a lot of different miscellaneous materials. But I've got to get Andy to, get somebody to pull, just pull that burner off so I can get inside there. I sampled the exterior of it today. It looks like it's been redone, but it looks very suspicious. So we hate to have someone in the middle of the summer come and say, "This looks like asbestos. Why don't you sample it?" They redid the outside jacket with a material that looks just like asbestos. We sampled it just to make sure. But answer to that is probably next week. We'll know by the end of next week whether it's...
Whether you mean three weeks or two, basically?
Yeah, yeah.
So you said if it's not asbestos, you, that'll cut a week off the abatement?
Yeah.
Does that mean you start a week later?
Well, the boiler room is kind of, that area we were already planning, you know, that was, the two weeks that they want to do it, the last two weeks of school, that's just that main hall and everywhere so that they can get in there. So we'd still need to start that last week in May. I think if we do the boiler room, we were talking about probably having to do that even earlier than that May. But nobody would have to be relocated out of the heart or any of those rooms. Again, we'd do that at night. We'd never leave the boiler room.
The school projects you're doing in May, how many of those schools are elementary schools? And how many are high schools? Do you have any idea? Or what kind of buildings at districts?
Yeah, I know we're doing, I want to say Pine Island, St. Charles. I think Pine Island is maybe a K-12. Two schools for Rochester schools are both elementary schools. And we've been doing two a year there for a while now, mostly elementary.
Any other questions? This is, thank you for coming down.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All business and special motion approval. The calendar, 2016, 17, 17, 18?
And right before the board meeting, I got an email from Patty Herman with the results of the vote online and onsite. It was 48 point something to 51 point a few. So it was basically 50-50 for MNVA between the tight and the loose. On-site, it was 100% tight for both. And so once again, you don't have to base your decision on those votes of the teachers, but I wanted you to be aware of the votes of the teachers. So MNVA was split basically down the middle between the two. And onsite wanted tight for both years.
Do we have the principals in MNVA? Did they have, were they unanimous in which one they wanted or did we know?
They created, so they created both. They could live with both. I know the onsite principals wanted the tight more. And online, they said they could live with either.
Do we want them all the same?
Yeah, we would either need to go tight for both or loose for both.
I make a motion for tight.
Okay. Second.
And could this just be for the 16, 17s? Because the 17, 18 calendar, we'll tentatively approve that one so that we can modify it if we need to. It's just...
So approving 16, 17, and then tentative on 17. So they're motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Gary. Second by Gary. Discussion on it? Did you have some other questions, Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Clay Target Team.
Oh, wait. Oh, so you did that all in one? So there's, one's tentative? Okay.
Correct. So I always had.
Did you get that? I think so. Okay.
Okay. Good. Clay Target Team proposal. CTT.
They presented at our last week's meeting, and we said we couldn't vote yet, so they're fat.
And they brought Lisa.
So do you have any further questions?
Do you have anything you want to say, Lisa, that all about it? I mean, I looked into it, I know Joe had questions, make sure you had.
Yeah, I did, again, to talk to some other ABs, and I was just impressed that in the initial sign-up, we had forty-seven students interested. Granted, they don't, you know, the cost and all of that, but even with that cost will deter some, we still would have a solid team, maybe a huge team, but anyway, we'll find out. But possibly, but it was just a huge interest, which I was somewhat surprised, so.
So we have a motion to approve their proposal?
So will.
Motion made by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Ron. Further discussion, further questions?
I am really conflicted about this. I just want people to know where I, my thoughts. I enjoyed Clay Target shooting a lot as a youngster with my dad, and I thought it was great. I just really have a problem, I know it's a growing sport, I looked into the number of schools that are doing this, and I see it's responsibly done, it's been responsibly presented, and I'm just really uneasy about the timing and going in this direction. So just wanted you guys to know what I was thinking.
That's great. Anybody have an other? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
End of year adjustment for the elementary school.
Well, after listening to Pat, it sounds like the abatement can be done after school, and we would not have to close the school. However, as the board, I want you comfortable with the decisions that are made. I did have Rick talk to his staff about the possibility of moving classes elsewhere. And Rick's comment was, the staff said, please do not make us teach at the Lutheran Church again. So that must have, and I did not, not that there is anything wrong with the Lutheran Church, it's just.
That we know of.
Yeah. But it was, from that response, it sounded like they had been asked to relocate there. Were they, did they have to relocate there after a flood or a water main break? Water main, okay. And so the request was, please, that was not conducive, there was not good learning that went on there because the kids were just not, it wasn't the usual. And so that came through, and I said, what about field trips? What about something else? And Rick just said, logistically, planning field trips would be really tough for that many field trips, and what about dropping the kids off if they couldn't go in the building at all? And so there were just lots of questions about that. If we could do the abatement for those last two weeks and just close off this red area and still have school in session, if we can do the abatement at night, then we wouldn't have to interrupt the end of the school year at all, other than the art room and the media room, that would have to be relocated for those last two weeks. And I know that puts a great deal of stress on the staff, both the two teachers that are teaching in those rooms and the other teachers, because everything is getting rearranged. However, with our, the timeline to open school on time, I don't, I don't see any other way around this. But as a board, you're the ones that are going to take the comments from the community. So I want you to be sure what we're doing is the right thing.
So when they said, please don't move for teaching towards the end before, was that an emergency situation, that the water main broke and everybody had to go somewhere, like immediately? We've got time to plan right now.
So one of them can happen, one was emergency, the other one was happened like the day before, and so we knew the next day we would be in other spots. So some were in the nature center, I took first graders to the community center, some went to the Lutheran Church. It just, we packed puzzles and books, and it was a really, a big daycare day.
I'm certain this is not an easy thing, but it's not like we're, we know when, you know, it's May, when we'd be asking for the relocation.
But I don't think we haven't, I mean, this was talking about us ending school three days early, but it doesn't seem like that's on the table anymore because they can do the abatement in the basement, and it doesn't affect anything but those two rooms. So.
I think the concern is having them doing that in the school with the children in there. Even, you know, originally, originally, we thought it was going to be done during the day. That was the original conversation. And I think that's where the biggest concern was for, whether it be teachers or the parents of these children, you know, why they're doing this abatement, my children, my child is above them. Well, now they're doing it at night, which was a different part of the conversation.
Well, actually.
And in an isolated area.
They had to be out of the whole school, was the issue.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, things have changed since the last conversation. So, I mean, myself, I mean, this, these guys have done it, they do it up at the Mayo Clinic, I think they were doing it at Gunderson Hospital, and I went through there a few times. They've done it in other places, so.
For years.
Yeah.
If not decades.
So, I mean, with what they're proposing, I'm comfortable with that going on at night, especially with the testing before and after, but I'm just one person. I'm comfortable.
Because they have to post the test results, they can't be done testing until they get at least five clears in a row. So we can guarantee that those test results have come back clear several times, if there is a bad one, before any children are back in the building the next day.
I think for me, people need to be comfortable with it, and I'd rather have everybody comfortable with this process. And if there is concerns, maybe we don't make the decision on the adjustment at this time. And if there is other avenues, like Michaeline said, there's options if we had to move them. And I think now with, after the discussion with this guy, unless you guys are ready to make a decision, I don't know if everybody's ready. I mean, I'm fine, but I think Kevin is good, but not maybe other people have more questions or concerns, I don't know.
I'm comfortable.
Gary, you're good? Michaeline?
No, I still have concerns. Have you talked to Deb Jurgensen or any medical folks about their opinion on?
No, I have not. Nope. I can't.
And what grades and ages of students are on the basement floor, other than art and media? Is kindergarten or is it first grade down there? And what grades are down at the other end of the building?
Cafeteria. It's actually up a, it's.
Up a bit, yeah.
Up a bit.
Okay.
It's not the basement, it's through the cafeteria is the other room that's at that same level.
Going to go up the stairway and through the van?
The bandroom or? ITA.
ITA, they would also have to be moved, ITA would be moved to a different location.
Would we move the cafeteria, or would you leave it down there? Or could you move that up to, and so nobody would even be in the basement at all, or?
Move it to the lunch, to the gym?
Gym, yeah.
Yeah.
More than likely that would be.
Yeah.
More than likely that would be the same.
Actually, the gym is where you ate lunch when you went through high school, right?
You're aging yourself, Gary, just.
No.
Doesn't have to have eaten lunch.
You never ate lunch at school. I don't remember that.
Okay. Well, I don't think we really have enough information to, it seems like it's all changing, so.
Well, and it's just, and that's, because today, when he came, I was like, really? You can do the, and he said, we got with UNESCO last Thursday, and I didn't hear about those until today.
Ron, you have questions?
I've got questions. I guess I didn't ask him, but I think this is a pretty safe procedure. I'm assuming, and I didn't ask, is that they keep the negative pressure on all day, even when the kids are in there?
That one I did ask about before, and they did say that they, as long as it's in that abatement zone, if there has to be negative pressure, as long as it's locked down.
Well, I still, well, I have some questions.
Joe's not here, I don't know what his thoughts were, but, I mean, right now we're kind of split from what I'm getting from this. I mean, why don't we just table it until next meeting? If you have the opportunity, you can talk to Deb, get more information on it, find out for sure on the dining facility, cafeteria, where are they going to move it to? Will Rick just get that confirmed?
Okay.
And if there's other questions?
I think it might be helpful to, if you contacted one or two of the other schools that had this take place during their school year and what their experience was with this company. I mean, I feel very comfortable, but, you know, why not?
Oh, yeah, that's a good, that's a good, can you get that information, Crin, and then email it out to everybody? That way if somebody has questions, because there may be, you know, whether we're using Deb at our facility, but at one of these other schools, they may have had those type of questions come up with their nurse or somebody at their.
Well, and how responsive was the, did the test come through right? And was the company responsive?
Why don't we just do that? We'll table it for now until next meeting.
Okay.
We'll get us out the information.
The only thing is, is that this guy isn't the company that's actually doing it, he's just doing the test. So, I mean, we almost need to know who the company is.
UNESCO isn't doing it either, so we need, yeah.
No, he's the general contractor.
I would, I'm quite comfortable with it, but if somebody bids and we accept the bid of a company who's never done it before, my comfort level could drop pretty quickly.
I, to be honest with you, maybe I would have to say there's probably only a handful of people that do it.
Okay, yeah, but it scares me a little bit when he says ten in A, and I'm thinking, there's not that many in the state of Minnesota.
I'm just thinking that, to have a license for that, knowing.
Also, if he's going to sample his boiler, it might be nice to know if that's included or not.
Right, and that would, we'll know next week, so. Why don't we just table it until the next meeting?
What would it cost, or what would it be to do additional air quality sampling? Like, when the kids are running around during the day, there's not abatement going on, but they're running around and the janitors are, the custodians are sweeping and stirring things up, can we get a test then?
Except that test would come back positive for dust, but it, because as he said, the tests that they do are just, it's for dust.
And I, and dust settles to the lowest level.
Yeah.
So, that's my concern.
But it's in.
Anyway, if we could do more testing somehow, I don't know what, if that would answer any question or not, if it would ease the concerns of anyone.
I'm guessing some of these kids have got more exposure to asbestos at home. To be real frank, given the age and the housing stock, et cetera, et cetera, but nonetheless, want to be safe, let's find out what the experience for those tools.
Put it out to get the information, Crin, put it out, and then we'll, we'll know. Okay?
So. Do we need a motion to table, or can we just table?
Well, it's not really a.
It's just a discussion, nobody's made a motion, it just goes back on the agenda next time.
Okay, so policies for second reading? These are, I don't think had any major changes to, correct, Michaeline?
Yeah, I don't think so.
We're pretty much the same, so.
Motion to approve policies 404, 406, 417, 418, 424.
Okay, so we have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. New business, items for discussion and approval? We have none. Announcements, point events, February fifteenth through the nineteenth, board, school board recognition.
Thank you all very much for serving on the school board, and I probably should have done some fanfare and pomp and circumstance, but.
Well, Ron said he'd be cupcakes, but I don't see him here.
Did you say that?
So I don't know what's going on.
We have some lifesavers back in the district office.
It's too late, it's already over.
How about smarties?
They go around.
Send them. My favorite.
Okay.
And then the other thing is just, our next board meeting is a Wednesday, and I know it's a Wednesday, I know it's during Lent. We do have the online school committee meeting prior to that, and then the board meeting at six.
What was the reason for that again? Is it caucus?
Caucus on the first. That's, it's, that's a Super Tuesday caucus, so.
I'm excited. Super day.
And I, when we set the calendar, looking at the fact that it was easier to go the day after than the day before, I didn't even think about Lent. So in 2019, we'll have to remember Lent.
You can make it a short agenda.
Just like the Alamo.
Okay, so meeting and committee updates. We talked about our Super Tuesday evaluation meeting, and then we have a facilities meeting.
Thursday.
Thursday.
And then meet and confer on the twenty-fourth.
I'm taking drivers that day, but I think I'm just going to wait for me to come to it.
Six.
Hopefully I don't come because of the. Five thirty?
Facilities meeting?
Five thirty. And then the meet and confer is three thirty.
Yep. And that's you, are you going this time? Michael, you? Yeah. Okay, anything else, Crin, on that? Nothing else to say for feedback, right?
As soon as I can figure out how to black out the three responses that they did not want shared, I will get that up, and I apologize for.
If nothing else, you can take a copy and just.
What I will end up doing is printing off a copy, taking a black Sharpie, scribbling it out, redacting it, yes. Scanning through.
So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ron and Gary, and second by Kevin. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Have a great night, people.
So I just wanted to let you know that wrestling made it to state, and they will be going on the twenty-fifth, and three of the Houston boys scored.